Lloyd, can you hear us?
I can now, yes.
Okay, good. We don't have to go through the whole script of getting...
You just went away there for a minute. Were you supposed to?
I think so. Yeah. Available.
Lloyd will need to be visible, so he's not going to hear.
Okay.
Because he's got to be visible to vote.
Make sure no one's... Make sure no one's...
Now everyone knows.
It was a choice. I don't know why, but it was a choice.
For whatever reason, your audio is really awful coming through here.
We hear you crystal clear, Lloyd.
I can't hear you except intermittently.
A call to Charlottesville City Council, October 6, 2025. City council meeting to order. Ms. Thomas, will you please call the role?
Counselor Oshron?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pinkston?
Here.
We have a request from Counselor Snook to join electronically. Mayor Wade?
Here. Counselor Snook is participating virtually from his home due to a temporary disability or medical condition that prevents his physical attendance. Counselor Snook, I'm going to first ask if you can... We're going to need you to turn on your camera and ask, can you hear us clearly now?
Well, is my camera shows as being on from my end?
Toggle it. There we go.
Ah. Because it's showing it's on. I wonder if one of my other programs that I last used the camera on has hijacked the camera link. I wouldn't know how to fix that.
You could try rebooting your computer, Lloyd.
Yeah, that might be a good...
Or your phone, or using your phone instead?
Or use your phone instead.
Al, shoot.
Knock it three times.
Yeah.
So Lloyd, we're going to let you play around with that some while we... Assuming that you can get on so that we can see you. And are there any objections from other councils for Lloyd to participate in this capacity? To participate electronically? Any objections? If we can get them up?
No objections.
Assuming we can...
But we do have to be able to see him for him to vote, right?
Yes.
We could maybe just say that some... Could we bring him in for the main meeting?
Voting, we don't need that now, but...
Yeah, there's no vote at this point.
To be counted present, you have to be... Have a visual and audible.
Well, could we bring him in to count it as present later?
Later.
Yeah, he's trying to reboot now, but yes, I can keep a lookout for when he is able to join.
I'm back to where I was. Are you not able to see me?
No.
Shoot. Well, if all else fails, I guess I can come down for 6:30 for the time that we have to actually be able to vote.
Mr. Snook?
Yes?
Try pressing the arrow that's next to the video icon in Zoom. It might give you other camera options.
The only thing it says is USB video device.
You don't have an internal camera on your computer?
I do. I don't have an external.
Oh, gotcha. I guess just try switching. If it gives you multiple options, try switching from one camera to another if you have...
It's not giving me that option.
Okay.
Hey Lloyd, do you want to try your phone?
Well, I guess I could. I don't really...
We could go ahead and get started, though, that way.
Yeah.
I'll join you momentarily by phone, I guess.
So...
Thanks.
What we'll do is that we will approve us being present and excluding Lloyd. And if he comes in later, we'll count him as present. But right now, you may be able to listen in, but maybe not vote, but we're not voting out anyway. So can I get a motion to approve or amend the agenda?
Move for approval of the agenda.
Second. It's a voice vote. We don't have everyone logged in, so...
Yeah.
Oh, right. Sorry.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Thank you. The meeting will be divided into three sections. The first section, we're here and discuss presentations that do not require council vote, followed by a closed session. And then we'll have our regular business meeting at 6:30. And today, we're going to hear three reports. The first one will be a presentation on FY 2027 budget development kickoff by Ms. Chrissy Hamel. Yeah.
Good afternoon, councilors.
Good afternoon.
Chrissy Hamel, Budget Director. If you can believe it, we're starting to talk about the new, next new budget, FY 27. So tonight, we'll start with the kickoff. Basically, we're going to review the calendar and the process. And then we'll finish up... If you could go to the next slide, please, for the agenda. We'll finish up with looking at... Thank you. Looking at the long-term forecast of sort of where we're starting. And then we'll end up with questions and comments or any concerns or anything you all have as we head into the process. So staff have been working on the... Have already started their work on the budget. Their CIP budget requests were due last Friday. Their operating budgets are due next Friday. We'll be meeting with the city manager and the budget team. Each department has an opportunity to meet and discuss their budget submissions at that time, all through the month of November. We used to do this throughout the whole month. This year, we changed it up a little bit. We've set aside, I think it's six dates where we're going to do a marathon of budget meetings all day. So we're going to try that this year. In December and January, the city manager will be having budget forums, which will also... We'll talk about that in a few minutes. That's going to be a little bit of a different format. And then finally, on March 2nd, the city manager will be presenting his proposed budget to you. So you'll have two meetings to set... To talk about the school board's budget. The first meeting will be on December 18th. That will be a joint meeting to talk about their budget priorities. And then on February 9th, we'll be meeting with them and you'll get a preview of their budget request. City Manager Sanders will be bringing to you a series of budget briefings. One tonight will be on schools and public safety. November 3rd will be one on transportation. And then on December 1st, there will be affordable housing. So the city manager budget forum, we're still working on these dates and times for the last, what, two years? We actually did a single budget forum. This year, city manager and communications are working with the neighborhood leaders groups in hopes to bring several of those meetings to them, to the neighborhood. And so we'll have more information on the exact dates and times for those will be coming shortly. Do you want to say anything else about that?
You got it.
Okay. We're also going to have a community budget forum on March 19th. This also serves as the public hearing for the budget. That will be at City Space at 6 o'clock. And then we'll have our normal series of budget work sessions, which will begin, we'll be spending every Thursday evening together, starting March 5th going through April 2nd. We'll be having a work session on the 5th to talk about the revenues and expenditures. We'll talk about outside nonprofit agencies on the 12th. And on the 26th, we'll talk about the CIP. And then on April 2nd, we'll wrap up for any final changes that you all would like to see in the budget. So the key dates. We're going to try for January 30th as a date that we will need to know if council chooses to advertise any rate increases for taxes. March 2nd, as I noted, that will be the date that the city manager and the school board will present their proposed budgets to you. March 16th will be our first tax rate public hearing. April 6th will be the second public hearing on the budget and the tax rate. And then on April 9th, we will formally adopt the budget. That gives us a few days. April 15th is what is required by code. We try to keep a little buffer in there in case anything happens that we need those dates. But April 9th is the date we're shooting for. So to sum that up, we'll have four work sessions, two public hearings, one community budget forum, and then we'll adopt the budget on April 9th. And then again, there will also be several city manager budget forums as well. For the CIP budget process, we have two dates set to meet with the planning commission. One is on November 25th. That is basically a work session where we meet with the planning commission. They get a first chance to look at the first draft of the CIP. And then on December 9th, I think that's a 9th, we will meet with them to hold the public hearing. So three budget drivers of this budget, as you know from your retreat that you had back in August. Transportation, affordable housing, and schools. Those are both big ticket items. They'll drive big expenditures in the budget. So we'll be having lots of conversations on those. And now I'm going to transition to the fun part. So these numbers are a little bit hard to see now that I see these on the slide, but they are in the packet. This is a long-term forecast. We have been working with our financial advisor. Vian came and met with you all as part of your retreat. We've been working on this forecast for a number of reasons. One, we're getting ready for the budget season, but also we're in the midst of new contract negotiations for collective bargaining. So trying to determine what we could expend for those things or what we think we can afford. We have been looking at this model. This model is basically bare bones. I will say that we always start with a budget gap. When we're starting the budget process, we always end with a balanced budget. But this year feels a little bit different. Typically, our budget gap starts with us having more expenditures than revenue. That's not untypical or atypical. But in this case, with this forecast, we basically are looking at bare bones. So what this means is that for... On the expenditure side, just if every... Without looking at any new contracts, just if everybody's got a step for their compensation where they are now. We looked at about a 2.5% inflationary increase on other expenses. We do know that we need to make some additional investments in our healthcare fund. And then for capital projects and debt service, about 5%, given what we know we already have built in the CIP. And that's about it. No other expenses. You'll see here that on our revenue side, we really are looking at a very modest increase in revenues. Real estate tax, we're looking at about a 3.5%, maybe 4% assessment increase is what we're projecting right now. We actually saw a decrease in our personal property tax revenue for the current year is what we're working with, is a decrease on that projection. And then the sales, meals, lodging are basically flat, even though we had tax increases on meals and lodging. So when we compare all of these things, we are basically starting with about a $6.7 million projected budget gap. That's without adding any of the bright new shiny things. So as I said, we have a lot of work to do. We will get it done and we'll get there. But this is what I would say, certainly the budget's not negative. It won't be negative. But we do have work to do in terms of setting priorities, figuring out where to spend dollars, how to spend the dollars. And this is what is, I would say, of my tenure here, something that's a little bit more normal. We've had many, the last three or four budgets have been budgets that were flush with new revenue. We had federal dollars, we had state dollars, and those have basically... They're done. So we're back to our normal sort of tax base in terms of balancing our budget. Any questions on this?
What are you... What are the revenue projections based on?
In many cases, so the revenue projections for the real estate tax are based on what we're seeing. This is a number we actually worked with our assessor on, based on their tracking of sales and other things related to the market. It's also based just on trends that we're seeing. Personal property is the same kind of thing. When we did the budget for '26, we basically... I would say we were overly optimistic. We will be revising that budget number for '26 as well down. So that's kind of our springboard for '27. And then the sales, meals, and lodging, we're basically looking at trends and based on actual collections to date.
And for the immediate year, the projection total revenue growth is 1.6%?
Pardon me?
And so for FY '27, the projection is a total revenue growth of 1.6%?
Overall, right now. That's the change from '26 to '27. Some of that is being driven by about a half a million dollar, half a million dollar decrease in personal property taxes.
I guess I just find that, looking it up, I think at the height of the Great Recession, our annual budget growth was like 1.1%. Then before and after, it quickly went back to 5% or 6% annually. So I guess I'm just surprised that it would be a number as bad as, you know, our worst year at the height of the Great Recession.
Yeah. I mean, I don't...
Did you have anything you wanted to add along those lines or...
And I would say it's very early. So we have time.
Hello, Jason Vanderweer, City Treasurer. Yeah, these are ones that we've been working on a lot lately. You know, I say the biggest piece is real estate. And there's the 3.5% to 4% number is kind of where we are with the assessor right now. That doesn't include any sort of, you know, large new construction projects, but there are several, you know, under construction. It's just, we don't know when they're going to be done and we don't want to count those in our projections until we have more certainty of when those might actually be completed and incorporated into the assessments. But, you know, some of those are large projects. So the 3.5% to 4% is based mostly just on reassessment of current properties. So that's one piece of it that, you know, might get more optimistic as we go. As far as personal property, that one is also hard to project because we basically get those numbers on January 1st every year. And as we get closer to January 1st and closer to your January 30th deadline on setting the tax rate, we should have some more information about that. But I think last year, we had projected about a 3.5% increase on personal property. And that didn't materialize with the 2025 numbers. So some of that is new vehicles, some of that is reassessment on old vehicles. And so there are a lot of factors at play in the assessment of used vehicles especially, and what those numbers are going to be. So that's part of it. Your question about the, you know, looking at a 1% to 2% increase overall, some of that is driven by those economically sensitive revenues, like sales tax, meals tax, lodging tax. And certainly another month of data might help. But one of the things that we've noticed this time around is that there's not really a consistent trend, either up or down. It's like some months are up, some months are down. It just makes it really hard to forecast right now without having that consistency. And so those are some of the things that we're looking at. And hopefully, as we get closer, we'll be a little more optimistic. But right now, the data is not really there to support, you know, projecting revenues that are higher than that at the moment.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about this page?
Sure.
I'm looking at the line down there that says 15% growth in health benefits to build up the reserve. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that Vian also presented to you at the retreat is the idea that we are self-insured for our health insurance. And what we have seen over the last few years is increasing claims costs that have been exceeding the amount that we are actually funding into the plan. And so there is sort of a universal standard of a reserve that you should keep for that healthcare fund. And right now, we are below that and are projecting to remain below that for this year. And so this is a way to build up those reserves to get back on par because we are... There's a chance... We are on a downward trend. So I don't want to say we're going to end up negative, but we do need to address that to make sure that we are not in negative territory.
So what is the reserve supposed to be?
Do you want to talk about that?
So we have a target reserve in the healthcare fund of about 30% of claims. And I think there was a work session last year where we kind of talked about that in a little more detail on how we've fallen below that. And so this 15% is not... I mean, obviously, the city is not... Can't absorb 15% increase in its healthcare cost every year going forward. But this is sort of a one-time adjustment that we feel would be helpful to the healthcare fund to kind of get it back on track and recover from some of the bad claims experience that we've had over the last two or three years, so.
Well, and just in terms of plain old dollars, how much are we low? How much are we below where our reserve should be?
Yeah, we'd have to get that number, to get a hard dollar number for you.
I mean, I don't need it to the penny, but I mean, are we talking about a $1 million gap, a $5 million gap? What are we talking about?
It's more than one. Less than 10.
Yeah, we'll get you some specific numbers. But I would also say that this is not a unique problem to the city of Charlottesville. There are a lot of locale... All locale... I don't want to say all. That's a big word. A lot of our peers that we are talking to are having similar issues. COVID was a time when people were not going to the doctor. And so claims were low. People started going to the doctor. And we've just experienced... We've had some bad experience with some big, high-dollar claims as well.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, as we look at this revenue... This expenditure line, I assume it comes under benefits, not under cash compensation. How much of the $3 million or $2.4 million in increase between 2026 and 2027 is going to be attributable to this extra amount that we're looking to kick in to build the reserve back up?
So I... We can get back to you on total dollars, but I can give you an example. In 2024... No, excuse me, 2025, per employee, the city was contributing $10,717 per employee. With the '26 budget, because of similar issues, we bumped that up to $14,000 per employee. We're looking to probably raise that somewhere in the 10% to 15% category. From the $10,000 to the $15,000 was roughly a 30% increase from '25 to '26. And so we're looking to raise that, you know, about... We're projecting about 15% increase here, but I can give you the absolute dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's based on a percent of payroll as well.
Okay.
So sorry, that $14,000 is how much we pay for each employee's insurance?
It's how much... So we get a flat amount that we pay. And then that amount is distributed by the number of employees. And that's just how we break it out. And it ends up being about $14,000 per employee. That's not the exact premium. There's a total cost. We... Because not every employee has city health insurance. But we allocate per...
And is that... I don't... I've never bought large-scale company insurance before. Is that a normal amount? Or is that high per person?
It's based on your... I mean, we are required to make a payment for our healthcare that covers our cost of claims. Every... I mean, everybody's plan is different. Your, you know, the number of people that are in your plan, the health of your people. So it's hard to compare apples to apples, but we can try to get you some more information.
Okay, thank you.
Do you remember how bad things were a year from now? I mean, not a year from now, a year ago? Was it this dismal?
You know, we... I think a year ago, we were looking at... We didn't necessarily look at it this way, starting out. We were looking more at revenues. And I think we were looking at roughly like a 5% increase on revenues at that time. So like I said, this one... So, like I said, this one feels a little bit different because revenues are not performing at the levels we've seen for the last few years.
Any other questions or you?
No, I think, I mean, I just, you know, one thing to say is it's not negative. You know, revenues are growing. It's just not growing at the rate that we've been accustomed to over the last three or four years, which really, if you went back historically, they are not, that was abnormal. This is more normal, quite frankly, so, you know, we've got a lot of work to do.
I'm sure y'all will figure it out.
We have no choice.
Right. So just a final thing, please be sure to check out our budget webpage. We'll be rolling out a new Budget Explorer with some enhancements with the first quarterly report in November. That's also where you can find all the information for the budget work sessions, presentations, all the information is there. And with that, if you have any questions or concerns about the process, anything you'd like to see differently, now would be the time to let us know.
Good, I'm glad that Jen Flasher is here because she's going to be in the thick of this when we get to roll in on this next year, so welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Our next presentation will be, I guess you're doing it.
Okay, so Chrissy brings you all the great news, and then I just go deeper. So I'm going to give you a budget brief on public safety. We had identified in the presentation that schools, housing, and transportation were the budget drivers. We still have some work to do to figure out exactly what the school's exposure may be as it relates to budgeting. So we're in a shift, and I decided to make this brief really focused on public safety. The intent of this budget brief, and this is a three-part series, you'll get one of these each of the next first work sessions over the next three months. The goal is just to highlight some of the things that we're thinking about, talking about, and seeing as it relates to the budget so that you can begin to feel my pain of putting a budget together. Really feel Chrissy's pain because she's the one that has to make it all come together and add up. So as I said, the budget drivers being transportation, affordable housing, and city schools. We're just going to substitute and put public safety ahead of that for now because city schools is going to be something we have to work on. Our public safety priorities being public service, interventions, fire department, police department, and emergency management, as you might expect. In our public service space, we added a concrete crew in the last budget. Those new positions have already been integrated. We're now going to be looking at, is there a need for equipment? I'm sure there will be some adjustments that come from the public works team as they talk to us about that. We've been talking about trash collection, bringing it in-house, and is that a benefit to us to do that? If so, there's a huge outlay of cash for buying new equipment, so we'll be talking about that. And then, of course, having to take a look at what impact that has on current contracts. And then capital development is just our continued work of building. We have a lot of projects still in the hopper, we'll continue to put those there, and you know what stress that brings. So there's work to be done, and we'll still have to determine what some of those financial impacts will be. In interventions, the first we'll highlight is Anchor specifically. It's a very high-performing pilot program that we've been running. We've internalized the role, we're talking about internalizing all roles, so taking a look at the mental health clinicians and determining, should we go about doing that? Do we expand service hours? Do we broaden the scope? We've been very pleased with what we've seen in that space, and Misty and her team are working together right now for what they're calling Anchor 2.0 that they'll be presenting pretty soon. It will be basically an update on what more we can do in that space, but it comes with a budget ask attached to that. So we'll have to see if we can make that fit with what you just heard as to how things are working. Flock specifically, as you know, I'll put it here just as a reminder that the pilot currently ends at the end of the month. The chief is engaged in outreach sessions. Looks like I'll be telling him he's got to do a few more outreach sessions, but we'll make sure that those happen. And then we have a council check-in on the matter of whether or not we continue Flock into another year. It will not be a specific budget ask because we've already determined that if we were to do that, then the chief will pay for that, and we will not include any additional cost to make that possible. And the fire department met with the leadership team. Part of my conversation with all lead team members this year was that they had to meet with their city manager's office contact before they could submit their budgets. And the goal there was just to help provide a little extra guidance on what they have done in the way of prioritizing their budget asks and determining if there were some things that we were just going to be able to give a quick answer and say, we're not going to be able to consider that. One, it saves them the time of submitting something that's not going to likely make it through the cut. And two, it really gives us a chance to make sure that we're taking stock at what's coming before we get the massive list that then becomes a pretty hard task for us to go through and determine what we can and cannot do. And the operational areas for the fire department, managing overtime is a big deal. Uniforms gear and PPE are some things that they've talked about, needing to make some adjustments to their budget for. And integrating single-role EMS, which we have brought that to you previously, that's a new division within the department. So with that comes a little bit of adjusting for individuals who are just EMS service providers, and they will not have a firefighter response role, and just making sure that we've accounted for that. So there's a sizable increase that we projected. We have to reconcile that with some of the other citywide submissions. But ideally, our goal is, of course, to take care of our fire department to the best of our ability. Police department, I added school resource officers. This has become a very hot topic. It's here in that there is a recommendation that will be coming from the school board. That recommendation has not been received at this time. It is being discussed. The initial conversation was that there would be four officers that would be proposed to be added. That would be a new budget ask. That was roughly $900,000, which is what the chief confirmed for the work group that's been considering this particular item. We have since heard that there appears to be a desire to cut back on the request and go with two officers instead. And the chief has identified an ability to operationalize those two officers without an additional budget ask. That does not become formal until the superintendent submits an ask, and that has not happened at this time. But if that should happen, then we will, of course, have to bring that forward because we still want council to weigh in on the matter of supporting the deployment of resource officers in schools again. Some of the other budget priorities, we are out of compliance today in that we are not currently providing a drug court officer, a sworn officer, to serve drug court. It's a part-time position, so the chief has highlighted that for me. And our clerk of court, of circuit court, has identified that as an ongoing concern, so we're going to have to take a look at that. There's an internal conversation about some additional support for community involvement because the work that the chief and his team has done has actually been well-received, and we might need a little help to help coordinate some of that. And we are expecting software and contract increases because we're seeing that across the city. So still a few more things to work out in that space. And then emergency management, I'm actually going to have our new emergency management coordinator, John O'Brandy, step up and give you an update as to what he's been doing in the, how many days have you been here? The very long period, long tenure that he has here, he's already put some serious points together as to work that he's doing.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wade, council members, and of course, city manager Sanders, John O'Brandy.
Good afternoon.
Emergency management coordinator. And I appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update on the plans that I'm putting together for my first 100 days, give or take. Certainly by the end of the year, here's what I hope to kind of have accomplished. There are three kind of main areas I would like to address. Completing review of emergency plans and procedures, of course, budget planning, which we just heard a lot about. And then also the emergency management framework that the city works within. When we talk about emergency plans, there are two that are key, and those are our continuity plan, which is our internally-focused plan that helps us deliver the business of local government during a disruption on a daily basis. And then our emergency operations plan, or our EOP. And that's more externally-focused, and that's how we coordinate across the city and across other agencies throughout the city during a disaster that might impact the community at large. So with continuity planning, there's been a lot of work that's been ongoing over the last number of months, and that's in pretty good shape. We are having a training event the first week of November that is going to introduce a citywide continuity plan. And what I will announce by the end of this year are some plans that designate certain dates in the springtime for actual exercises that will be conducted at the department level because we don't want the plan to just sit on a shelf. We want folks to work with that plan and understand it. In terms of the EOP, I'll talk a little bit more about this in just a second, but I've read through it, and there are some updates that I'll make primarily around our emergency management framework. But I'll also, in the coming weeks, be talking with the city attorney's office in terms of our emergency procedures so I can get a good understanding of those procedures and any changes that we might need to make. In terms of the emergency management framework, the city adopted the National Incident Management System, or NIMS, some time ago. And we're going to lean into that framework, but what we're going to do is clarify roles and expectations of staff. I'm making some changes in the EOP to make that a little bit easier for folks to understand and feel confident in their role during an emergency. So I'll publish a training schedule by the end of the year and also have chosen and scheduled a date for an EOC exercise in 2027, hopefully, late spring, perhaps early summer of 2027. So thank you again for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
So then the bookend to that set of objectives being identified is there are going to be some financial requests that will be coming forward as well. At this point, I am not looking to necessarily add things to the FY '27 budget. But what I have talked to John about was that I have previously prioritized emergency management within the deployment of our current surplus. And there are some items that we will still bring forward, and the goal is to try to help give him a little more time to reconcile some of these things and determine what things really rise to the priority of being able to come and ask for that to hopefully avoid having yet another increase having to be operationalized in the FY '27 budget for the fact that it just might not fit. But I do feel good about what I'm hearing him say and see already. That last item there about the emergency operations center drill and exercise, we have not done any real testing of our ability to respond. We haven't done that for years. So that is something that I do consider to be a very high priority, and it does come at a cost. So we want to try to begin to do that work soon. Next up, November 3rd, I'll do the budget brief on transportation and skip forward on a 1st of December. We'll do one on affordable housing. In between that, there's the CIP work session with the Planning Commission, and then the public hearing on that CIP, the CIP budget on the 9th of December. And then you have your joint meeting with the school board on the 18th of December. And I will make my budget presentation to you on March 2nd. It is the greatest day that I have when I get to come and tell you that the budget is balanced because it must be. And then we adopt on the 9th unless something goes wrong. I knew she was going to say that. So that is where we are with the brief at this point in time. Did you all have any questions on anything, just how we're wrestling with the budget already?
Lloyd, did you have any questions?
No, I didn't, thank you.
Okay, Michael?
I guess it's a bit broader than just the budget, but with the emergency management piece, obviously, in 2017, Charlottesville went through, you know, several events and a terrorist attack that exposed a lot of deficiencies.
Right.
What are you seeing as the deficiencies that still exist today in terms of the scale of investment in order to get into a place where we feel like we've fully implemented all the lessons from 2017?
Yeah, I'll say, honestly, we're still figuring out what the lessons are. We have not really done the most robust bring yourself forward out of a set of big events like that. We've talked about it a lot. We've had different people in different positions at different times. But until we really formalized that there was an Office of Emergency Management, that that's what they were going to do all day long, every day, that hasn't really gotten us to a place of having this checklist of things that we're going to just tick off and say, we're going to get these things done. We did a lot with Jeremy in his tenure in the seat of figuring out what we weren't doing that we had been doing. So we've gotten a lot of that stuff, the COOP planning back so that all those plans can be up and running so that if we had any interruptions, staff would know what they're supposed to do. Like, we've gotten that part done. When I first started talking about this surplus round, one of the things that I highlighted as a big deal was getting barriers for the downtown mall, especially for those two crossings that we still allow cars to cross where people walk, that we need to at least implement a barrier system because we're using vehicles today, and we've been using vehicles from well before 2017. That's, that fails, that's not a good version of doing it. And I would plan to bring that back and get that done. And I think the exercise is something that we need to just put into the budget on some schedule so that we can test various things that could happen, and just remembering that in a community where there is a river, where there's an interstate, where there's an airport, things happen. Where's a railroad, all those things, it just happens. So you need to plan for those because any one of those accidents could happen in our footprint, and we have to respond. And we need to make sure that we're ready to.
And there would be, obviously, it's more long-term. Is there any, like, connection with the work the climate team does on resilience planning? Not emissions reductions, but resilience with emergency management, or are they kind of in different?
They're in different lanes, but I do, there's moments to come together. The river specifically is one of those things that we have to take into consideration. John has already started moving around the organization and getting connected to more and more people. So I think there's still opportunities for us to figure some of that out, but yes, there's a place for it. We have sustainability, emergency management, equity as just topics that go. They supersede a department or an office, they go everywhere.
And the only other question, what's kind of the sense of scale with both the fire department and police department in terms of the requests for additional staff positions and kind of the cost of that?
I think they both understand that they're not supposed to be asking for more staff. Because the chief is laughing in the back. Only, only positions that are needed is what I keep hearing, but their numbers are, they're very small numbers. One, one and a half, maybe two people is what I've heard in my check-ins with them in the past few weeks. That makes it easier because we are seeing just the cost of doing business continue to go up. So their software contracts and other things that they absolutely have to have are automatically going up. So we're having to absorb that before we can even have the conversation about, can you get another FTE or not?
Yeah, and I remember at some point, there was a discussion with the police department of having like a outside analysis, trying to figure out what the ideal staffing levels would be. Is that something that, is it ongoing, stopped?
We haven't talked about that recently, so we'll say.
So if you remember, that was, I say, two budgets ago, we requested, but that was something that we pulled, pulled out. We had a, we had an agreement with the Justice Department to do a collaborative reform effort under prior administration. That was in place, and that was one of the things that I've asked them to do, but that was pulled with all the other federal grants and stuff. So that's no longer happening. I'm not sure if that'll get up and going again. So to answer your question, I think we definitely need one staffing study for me to stand in front of you and say, I need 20 more cops because of this and that. We need to have something that says that. I don't feel comfortable saying that right now.
Sure.
And the approach really has been, I'll just kind of share how I've processed it. Whenever the chief and I talk, I keep telling him, no more FTEs, no more FTEs, and he knows better. He knows that he's supposed to come and ask me for them. We talk about, how are you going to use them? Where are you going to use them? What is it that we're going to be able to do specifically by adding? Because we had more. We had a higher number of police officers, and then we also shifted some of the various management of expenses to make sure that our officers had take-home cars. So for that, we reconciled that that cost then meant that we weren't going to fill some of the vacancies that we had. That's still a balance, and we're still, and we're in collective bargaining. You don't get out of it until you kill it. If you don't kill it, it just gets more expensive because that's part of the process. So we have to be able to reconcile all of it. So more of the conversation that we're having is really, where do we need officers? Is there an area, is there a shift, is there more that we need to be able to do? Are there special beats that we need to consider being able to prioritize? special beats that we need to consider being able to prioritize? That's really where the conversation has been.
And similar with fire in terms of...
Fire, yeah.
Similar types of conversations about new...
Sure, because we've had, I don't know, Chrissy, how many years have we talked about overtime for our department?
Ah.
Long, we've had a good number of years. I've posed the question a few times, at what point does overtime come down just by adding officers to trade off the overtime expense by putting permanent bodies into those seats? We're still wrestling with that, but we're never going to eliminate overtime. There are some structural things that need to be looked at as well, the number of holidays and vacation days that we give for individuals who really can't take them because we need them. There's some work that still needs to be done in that space. But I'm not refusing FTEs in those critical spaces, just offhand. We're really having conversations about it.
Sure.
Yep.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Something you touched on in your response just now, but wasn't part of this presentation, is the fact that there's two crossings of the downtown mall for vehicles.
Yeah.
Are we going to have a conversation at some point about closing one or both of them?
I had a feeling you were going to say that. I don't want to go there, but I'll just say that we did talk about it during the Downtown Mall Action Committee. It comes up every time we talk about the downtown mall. There is a lot of back and forth on, should we? I'll say that we see reasons why we should, and we also recognize that there are legitimate business reasons for not, because it does make it difficult for accessing some of the businesses, because they use those through points as being able to make deliveries. So it changes the orientation of how you use the mall. But we have not prioritized a specific conversation on that. It has just come up every time we've talked about the mall.
Mm-hmm. Perhaps if it's come up every time, it might be worth a specific conversation?
I'll make a note of that. It's being noted. I'm sure James is like, "Yep, we'll talk about it if that's what you want to do."
Okay. Thank you, especially in light of, you know, Fourth Street.
Yep.
Okay. For the, I was focused so hard on that question. I, for the concrete crew, that was one of my other questions. The new positions are being integrated. Great. When you say need equipment, does that mean we don't have equipment for them to do the work that we are currently asking them? Are we renting it?
No, they haven't. We just may need more, because we might actually be able to do more.
Do more work.
Yeah, I mean, it's been one of those things, Steve Hicks has been really, really excited about the idea of being able to have a crew, a crew that could actually perform and get that work done, and we've gotten a number of projects done that would have taken many, many more months to get done, so I think he feels good about that. The question is really just whether or not we're going to need anything else, and if we do, we'll manage that with our fleet replacement and through an addition if we had to, but it's just a question, because it's new.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if they're like hired, but just sitting around.
Oh, no, 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 no. We have a backlog of many things, so they, no one sits.
Okay. They've got the tools for their tasks. Okay. Great. And that was really all that I had at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, you have any questions?
Okay.
No? I think I asked Lloyd.
I'm good.
Great. So...
Yeah, I've got nothing further.
Okay, thank you.
I would just add, the downtown mall crossings were only opened somewhat recently to vehicle traffic, so it's not like it was always the case that they were even open to cars, but anyway.
Well, we'll have an official discussion about it.
Thank you. The next presentation will be Misty Graves and the Charlottesville Area Alliance. She's Sue Friedman with her.
Yes, yes. I do want to say, I'm Sue Friedman. This year I am Secretary of the Charlottesville Area Alliance. Misty Graves is our Vice Chair, and our Chair is Melanie Benjamin, who you may know from the Center on Belvidere. And we wanted to start, you've got an agenda, I'd say, welcome. Thank you so much for giving us this annual opportunity. We really appreciate it, because substantial, significant work has been happening, and I applaud the city for paying attention over the 10 years of Charlottesville Area Alliance to the promise of becoming an age-friendly community. So this organization was founded by five individuals in 2015. We are not a nonprofit on purpose, because we do not want to compete for funding with other nonprofits. We have been gifted consultants from Virginia AARP, once we signed on to the national initiative to become a certified age-friendly community, and I'm really proud to, again this year, applaud the city for being the first local jurisdiction that approved commitment to the age-friendly initiative with a resolution in 2017. So thank you for that. One of the first things we did is decide, how do we know we're moving towards an age-friendly community? And after research, we decided to join in with the AARP Age Friendly Livable Communities Initiative, which was created by the World Health Organization back in 2004 and 2005. WHO said to the countries in the world, "Here it is. Here's the model. Here's the evidence-based opportunity to become age-friendly. You decide how you're going to pursue it." In this country, AARP stepped up. In other countries, it's higher education, or the health system, or newly formed organization. So AARP has been involved with this for more than a decade. So we completed a survey with the health of the Blue Ridge Health Department back in 2017 and 18, and our senior citizens across the Planning District indicated the three issues for them were, no surprise, transportation, housing, a surprise at the time, social participation. Being lonely, being alone, being isolated is a detriment to one's health. So those have been the three issues that we've been pursuing over the 10 years. We now have about 85 different partners. You can be a business, an individual, an organization, a nonprofit, a government. We have four elected bodies who have signed on, Fluvana County, Albemarle County, of course, the city of Charlottesville, and the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. So that's a very brief history. We have a lot of good information on the website, or I can certainly give you more, but your time is important, so we want to give you just a snapshot of what's happening in each of those three areas that were highlighted as the most important for the community and for becoming an age-friendly community. So the first thing we're going to do is, I'm going to ask Misty to share a little more about the AARP and those domains and what we've been pursuing.
Pretty much captured. What the AARP has set is those eight domains. You see it on your agenda in front of you, and also there is another infographic on the, more specifics about the AARP. Again, this is a framework that guides the work of CAA, and we use a lot of our time together to think about action steps that we can take towards improving the eight domains, and we also think about ways in which we can increase awareness or advocacy around the issues, because not only will creating a place to be age-friendly here in Charlottesville, it also benefits all of us, because if you look at the list of the eight things that are the most important, they're the things that are important to people of all ages. So it's very relatable, whether you are a child, or an adult, a family, or someone that's aging. One of the things that we'll talk about in the three priorities that we selected is transportation, and what elements of transportation are needed to be in place to be considered age-friendly or part of a livable community. Affordable housing, what we hear from our community members who are aging is that they want to age in place, which means they want to have housing that, one, is affordable, and also that has accommodations and amenities that is suitable to keep folks who want to age in place safe. And then social participation. So one of the elements of this plan that is actionable, that you can see, is from this alliance, two of our nonprofit leaders were able to work together to implement a memory care café at the center at Belvidere, to make sure that they were using their content knowledge in order to create a safe space for folks that may be having issues with their memory. So those are just some of the practical things. We're going to go into a little bit more of a deeper dive on transportation next.
One of the first areas that we worked on in transportation was ADUs several years ago, and of course, the city has been very wise to incorporate that as an option and an opportunity for many of the newer housing communities, and potentially some of those retrofitting of housing communities. And so now we're looking at transportation in the rural areas in particular, and our current consultant contract is helping us hear from seniors in the rural area about what they need for transportation, because the vast majority of their transportation needs are into the city, especially for medical and health appointments. And so that's a big area that we're looking at. We also, and Lucinda Shannon of the Thomas Jefferson Partnership District said this the other day, Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission, I should say, that through CAA, the PATH program was birthed, and that is a wonderful opportunity to allow any citizen to call them and say, "I need a ride. How do I get it? Where's the bus? Where's the microcat? Where's the Uber? Where's the rideshare? How do I get my ride?" And so the PATH program is actually one of the results of this alliance coming together and seeing what needs were and how we could make a collaborative effort to address those needs. We've also been looking at the amenities around bus stops, the sidewalks, the benches or lack of benches, the shelters or lack of shelters, the curbing, and we've had a wonderful relationship with CAT. They've been really involved and engaged, and we're doing bus field trips, for an example, and we're helping people understand how the bus is friendly, how they can use the bus, how they can feel comfortable and confident about it, and there are monthly bus field trips that are available for different housing communities, as well as around the city, so that people can become more comfortable and more confident about riding the bus and using that transportation. Number one, they're not driving a car, but number two, they may not be able to drive a car, so this gives them additional transportation. And so we're continuing to look at ways that bus transportation, walkability, I know last year, Councilmember Ashwin joined us for the walkability audits, so that communities, neighborhood associations, walk-to-school initiatives can do their own audit and find out how their pathway can be more walkable and less reliant on bus or car transportation. So we're really excited to continue these initiatives, and again, the work of CAA is to bring together BIPEC and all those organizations, Piedmont Environmental Council, the city, CAT, Jaunt, to bring everybody together, so that we all can collectively create options and opportunities and results to address issues that keep us from being an age-friendly
In the affordable housing space, the work group that is taking a look at that, we were able to receive a technical assistant grant from AARP, so we have some consultants that are working with us on creating an action plan for the Affordable Housing Work Committee. Currently, we are working on an outreach and engagement plan to elevate resources for folks who would like to age in place and who need assistance with housing navigation or finding affordable housing or accessible housing. Our idea that's in the works is to work with the existing resource that the Seaview Tomorrow had put out around Housing Resource Guide, and use an element of that to highlight some additional information related to aging in place, and what are some of the assessments that somebody may want to do for their loved ones or someone that they're caring for on finding housing that's affordable and accessible to them. So we will be likely doing some outreach on some of the city networks and utilizing some of our existing mechanisms for our communications department to elevate CAA and what we're trying to do in the affordable housing and aging in place.
Social participation. We've had a number of online Zoom programs. Again, we're having the memory café, but one of the things we need to understand is, who's living alone and who's lonely? So we're working to identify and answer those two questions. We're looking at new options and opportunities like a buddy system, almost like a friendly visitor type system, for those who are isolated. They don't have a car, they're not comfortable with the transportation, but they're isolated, and in isolation comes all kinds of health issues, primarily around Alzheimer's and dementia. So we're looking at partnering with other organizations like the Women's Initiative. What might we do, what might we encourage them to do to build out their service portfolio so that they're more available to our lonely and our alone citizens, and there are many of them. We're looking at the, and I'm going to read it, Behavior Risk Factors Surveillance System, BRFSS, that's done every year by the Virginia Department of Health through the CDC. They have questions on there asking about loneliness, living alone, isolation, caregiving demands, et cetera. So we can utilize data from that to help inform where our people are and what else we might do to help them become less isolated and more engaged in social participation with enhanced transportation, of course.
So in closing, one of the things that we have next on our agenda for CAA is to continue to assess not only community members, but also other organizations and our partnership to look at, are the three priorities that we selected some time ago still the priorities that we want to focus on, or do we want to expand to add another one of the eight domains of livability? Are we making ourselves available as content experts to other work groups that maybe the city has, or the county has, in our other jurisdictions that we can advise or be at the table when decisions are made with transportation and affordable housing and social participation? How can we expand the reach of CAA? So we just ask council to consider, of the eight domains, are there ones that you feel like we should add to our list? Are there certain things that you're hearing from your constituents who are aging in place or caring for someone who is aging that they would like to see incorporated or elevated, and potentially the work of the CAA can help do that on behalf of the city? And that's it. Opening up for feedback and questions.
Yeah, I'll go with Lloyd first.
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Misty.
You're welcome.
Brian, I'll start with you this time. You have any...
No, I can't think of anything to add. It seems like a very thoughtful, well-integrated list. Thank you both for your work and for coming to see us tonight.
Natalie?
Yeah, thank you so much. This is, I, so I'm on the RTP, which includes a representative from CAA, which is great, so we hear a lot about the transportation issues that older adults face, and of all of the eight pieces of the web, I think all of them are easily tied back to just one, which is housing, which I'm so glad you've covered that, and use the term aging in place, which I'm sure we all understand, but can you talk a little bit more about the specifics of what that means for anyone else who's watching?
I can be a personal, as well as professional, example. Aging in place means that my home allows me to live there if I don't see as well, if I don't hear as well, if I'm not as stable as I used to be, if I have less strength than I used to be for stairs. So aging in place means helping individuals figure out what it is they can do to make their homes aging in place safe. It's about hallway sizes and railing. It's about hallway sizes and railings on hallways, and it's about cabinets and kitchens being lower. It's about things that you don't think of until your body slows down a little and you realize you can't reach that high, or you can't bend that low. And so, there are actually aging-in-place realtors, there are actually aging-in-place certified contractors and developers and construction specialists, and so, making sure that we are able to connect those to the people who need them. It could be an entry ramp, or cemented oversteps, it could be a lot of different things, just depends on, you know, what the capacity of the individuals are, and then what their homes are like. But if someone's living in a home that's 20, 30, 40, 50 years old, it was in no way built to be aging-in-place ready. So, it needs modifications, it needs renovations. And so, helping people realize that there's resources out there, AHP does a little, there are other resources out there, and should we bring additional resources to that issue? Chances are, we should. The second part of aging in place is finances. Are my taxes going up to the point where I cannot afford them? So, there is both the physical home issue, but there's also the financial issue of being able to age in place. And so, having financial experts who are available to help people understand how they can get the money if they need it to maintain staying in their home and to do the renovations that they would need to age in place. So, that's what we're looking out for, aging in place.
Great, thank you. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I also like to think about it as being able to not not only, or not necessarily stay in the exact home in which you, you know, raised your family or spent a lot of years, but at least staying within your same community, so you're not having to go to a care facility, a county over, you get to stay where you are. And so, that's when you were talking about accessory dwelling units being crucial to that, right?
Absolutely. So, there are more and more contractors and developers looking at creating aging-in-place communities, and I'll give you an unusual example. Ryvanna Village, which is in the county, has sent out an email, I don't know how we got on the email, but we did, saying, we are building an aging-in-place community. Would you like to be on the list to come first and learn about it? It's one-floor living, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, more of new construction is happening in that way, and we could encourage more of that, but nine times out of 10, and I'll speak for my mother, she wanted to stay in her house, period, the end. So, how can we make that possible? How can we make that feasible, both of the physical aspects and the financial aspects?
Yeah, and what we were talking about earlier with car dependency being a problem as you age is, yes, that community out in the county might have the houses built for the in-home needs to be met, but are they able to get somewhere easily? And so, having that ADU in the backyard in town means you get to stay on your same block, maybe, but you've downsized, and then you're able to have the same kind of proximity to the things that you're familiar with.
Yes, you know, you raise an excellent point. Transportation is, at the end, a key. So, transportation and housing, in my mind, have to go together.
They're the same for me, yeah.
So, the city, and if you will, the urban ring are the places, you know, where we can really focus in on creating an aging-in-place, age-friendly initiative, because transportation is always going to be an issue for folks. But if housing can be available for them to age in their home, and they know that they're going to have that transportation available, that's like the win-win. Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. One of the things we talk about in the RTP, when we, so the PATH program for folks who aren't in these meetings, as often as Brian and I are, is, like you said, the kind of hotline for someone with transportation questions to call and ask how to get somewhere. And the biggest challenge is getting people from rural areas to their medical appointments. And what, something we talked about in the RTP meeting was how that sounds like a transportation problem, but it's often really a housing problem because of affordability concerns or availability. Those folks might be living where they can afford, but not where they would choose to be, and so, their challenges in getting to their medical appointments are compounded by the distance.
Yes.
Whereas, if they were able to afford or find something in the city, they would have access to those more easily.
And to that point, I know, we've tried, CAA tries to connect, okay? So, we connected PATH to Jabba's new chair of the board, and we connected PATH to Ravi Raspeedo Cooper, who we know runs the United Way of Greater Charlottesville, but she's also the new district governor for Rotary and has 52 Rotary Clubs in her district. And guess what? The Lake Anna Rotary Club is looking for a project, and so, we're trying to encourage them to become volunteer drivers. So, you know, what is it we can do? Who can we intersect with? Who can we connect to try and address both the living in Charlottesville and the needing to get to Charlottesville issues with the housing around it as well, so.
And then, of course, that ties into your third point, too, which is, when you're in a community, instead of isolated, you have access to a community for that social participation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, anyway.
Lots of opportunities.
Thank you, sorry to reiterate, but I just, you know, wanted to highlight some of those key, key things that are things that I think about when I try and think about the volume of housing needed, the types of housing needed, the empty bedroom problem, where maybe you are an older adult in the house where you raised your family, and you have three kids' bedrooms where the kids don't live, but there's some family out there that would love a four-bedroom house, and so, if you're able to downsize to the backyard, they can move in, and we, you know, there's all this kind of interplay between aging and community development.
You finished?
Yes, thank you.
Michael, did you have any?
No, I mean, just in terms of feedback, you asked for any feedback, I mean, I imagine I hear similar things as you all already do and mentioned tonight in terms of, you hear a lot about a desire for more community spaces where there aren't just something like a brewery, where, you know, people could go and be in community, maybe without needing to spend a lot of money to do that as well. Aging in place, the work of AHP, desire for, again, something you already mentioned, like more diverse types of housing developments, like, you know, development of small, tiny homes where people can live independently, but there's some community. Yeah, I think one of the things, like the Belmont Apartments a few years ago, I think were a good example of, it's a community of people who'd been living there for decades, and were all old, most living on fixed income with social security or disability and naturally-occurring affordable housing, monthly incomes around $900 a month, and the rents they were paying were like $300, $400, and had not been raised in decades, just because someone who owned a tow truck business happened to own this small apartment complex and didn't raise the rents. And I think a lot of particularly older residents who are renters are in those kind of naturally-affordable developments, and that one was sold and redeveloped, and the rents went from like $400 to like $1,600, so all of them had to move, you know, over an hour out of here. Some of them were blind and didn't have any other options. Once they were forced to move, you know, out into a rural area, they couldn't drive in to the transportation issues you're speaking of. All of which to say, I think the issue of preventing displacement in those naturally-occurring affordable housing units is like really, really important, because if someone can only afford $300, $400 a month, you know, they lose that, they're not going to be able to be in this community, period. So, and then, the other, another thing I hear that I, is, there's a lot of people I've talked to who want an accessory dwelling unit in their backyard to either age in place or have a relative age in place, but they can't figure out how to get the capital in a way that makes financial sense for them. So, what programs could we do to have access to lower-cost capital to actually do an ADU? But yeah, and then, the only question I've heard, before the pandemic, Parks and Rec did a lot of programming, Midway Manor, but other places as well, with day trips to Stanton. A lot of people loved taking a day trip to Woodgrill buffet. I mean, but really, I mean, these, you know, get-togethers, checkers events, bingo's events, those went away during the pandemic, they've come back, but not at the scale that they were pre-pandemic. Is Parks and Rec and that kind of programming that's targeted at, you know, existing senior community is something that you're involved with, or is that kind of siloed in its own world?
You know, outdoor spaces is one of the, outdoor spaces and recreation is one of the eight domain areas, and Parks and Rec would be certainly within our purview to kind of try to address transportation slash social participation issues.
Part of my role, which is being a liaison on-city, from the city to CAA, is to be able to leverage those relationships with other directors to talk about the work, so that's a great opportunity.
Yeah, and I know they still do some of this work, but I mean, it's things like, you know, a van will go to pick people up from these communities, take them on that day trip, bring them back, go into the, you know, building to do the bingo, checkers night, whatever it may be. So, I'm sure you're all aware of that work, but I think it's just like Parks and Rec, I think, has a real positive role that they play in the, in the social connection piece, but.
Yeah, so, I just had a couple of comments as far as what I think, you know, you should focus on, and this is like an example that, that I use a lot for my blog, and it's ironic that John O'Brandy, we all live on the same blog, Brian does too, but a little bit further down, and that's the social interaction. We have a few elderly people on our blog, and a couple of them that I connect with every day with a text, and if I don't get a text back, I, you know, I know something is wrong. This particular one is 90 years old, and yesterday, you know, but I'd like to see her, and sidewalks are real important, too, because that's how she gets her exercise, she walks in up and down the block, and we see her as well, but yesterday, when I went to see her, she was doing fine, so she's 90 years old, can still be, live alone, but she doesn't have any family close by, so, you know, a few neighbors we, that network that kind of check, check in on it. And so, yesterday, she said that she needed some medication, but the next door neighbor was going to get him when she got off work, and, but she wasn't getting off today, and I said, well, the pharmacy might be closed, and they were thinking that it closed at 11:00, of course, it closes at 6:00 or CBS. And I was able to get it, and I know that this, our neighbor is fortunate, she has this kind of community of care around her, and I, if we could do more to, because I think people want to give back, and it's a real easy way to give back, and they may not know that their neighbors might need help, if it's a way we could promote that or advertise, just to do, it doesn't have to be daily, it doesn't have to be even weekly, but somehow have a way to check in on elderly residents, if it was a way to do that, I think that, you know, it really can be a meaningful way for people to give back to their community, and also have that social interaction. And I find that also when I volunteer with the Meals on Wheels, when I go to homes and see, and, you know, many of them, that's, that daily interaction is what they, is, you know, they look forward to that, of course, the meal as well, but to see someone, see that face-to-face. So, so I would say that that is a big one, because that, that social interaction, if you don't have that, that can have an impact on your health, and if you don't have that, so a lot of things can be impacted like that. So, I think if we can pour into that, that, continue pouring, I think that would be good.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the good comments.
Thank you, Misty, Misty and Sue, thank you all so much. Okay, so, Sam, is that, that's it? So, do we have a closed session today? Yes?
Yes. So, a motion for a city council closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code. I move that the city council close this open meeting and convene in a closed session. It's authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as follows. One, present it to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Okay, thank you. We will be back at 6:30.